Good evening and welcome to the Select Board and Wage and Personnel Board, Tuesday, June 24, 2025, at 5:45 PM. Is anyone besides Lake Cam recording? Hearing none, call to order and Pledge of Allegiance. Do we have a flag in this room? All right, Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's move all this meeting to order.
Block here.
Candido here.
Carboni here.
Hunt here.
Excellent. Thank you, everyone, for joining. I'm sure you're all just here to escape the heat. You know, you didn't really want to come. You're here to be cool. We're going to first item up. Oh, we don't have any announcements or anything? We're in different orders back. All right, discuss a possible vote to approve vacation carryover for Kim and Kathy. Any contacts here from there she is?
Hi, sorry, I was out.
No, no worries.
Kind of generated, Ron. Hi.
Hello.
So there are two requests for the carryover. The first one's for Kathy Murray. Because we were in between planners, she wasn't able to take all of it. So she's asking for 12 hours over that she plans to take in either July or August. And then the second one is Kim DeGracia. She had planned an event and had wanted to take two weeks for it and it got canceled. So the event is now happening either July or August. So she's just making it for that event.
Okay, so everything will be used up by August, the end of August?
Yes, yep.
Okay. All right, any further questions before we? All right, take a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the vacation carryover time request for Kimberly DeGracia and Kathy Murray.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further conversation? Hearing none, roll call.
All aye.
Candido aye.
Carboni aye.
Hunt aye.
We always try to clean that up as much as possible. Lacey, are you sending out the use up, use up your time notices?
So yeah, every month at the end of the month, HR sends out to the department heads how much leave each person has so they know what they, you know, they are using.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And that's it for you?
Yeah, I think so, yes. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Moving on to item number three, Select Board announcements. The Arts Council would like to announce that there'll be four summer, there'll be four summer concerts at the Pavilion at the Townhouse, July 8th, between 6:00 and 8:00 PM. The Moonbellies will perform. This concert is also sponsored by the Lakeville Library and Arts Council. The remaining three concerts are sponsored by the Arts Council. On July 15th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, Wooden Project Band will perform. On July 22nd, from 6:08 PM, Black Vinyl Band will perform. And the last concert will be on July 29th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, Total Strangers will perform. To get information on these concerts, please visit the town's website at www.lakevillema.org. The Select Board is looking for three at-large members of the public to serve on the Town Hall Building Reuse Subcommittee. Details on these and other vacant positions can be found on the town's Facebook or website. Are there any other announcements from any of the other members? I can't think of any. I was looking at this, I'm like, no. The only announcement for people at home, if you're watching this, you're probably not affected yet, but there seems to be a wave of power outages around town, mostly focused on that side and a little bit up on Pickens Street and then going over on Kingman. So we're hoping MGE gets those sorted out as quick as possible. Agenda item number four, Town Administrator's Report, Andrew.
I sent this out a little later than normal, just because I was on vacation last week. You should have it in your packet as well. I'll just go through everything. So road paving has been completed for the month of June.
Andrew, could you speak up a little bit? I can't.
Yeah, so the road paving has been completed for the month of June. Paving will be coming back, Frank and his guys back in July and August, once the Chapter 90 funds are replenished. The Ted Williams Camp parking lot just outside, project began last week. You'll see a huge ditch, that's the drainage. There will be fencing set up at some point. We, Lacey and I met with the National Fitness Campaign Fitness Court Representatives a couple of weeks ago and then also this past week. There's something that kind of is starting to pop up. There's one where I live in Swansea, Somerset, Bridgewater State has one. Basically a huge driver of people to parks.
Do you want to, do you want to explain to the people at home?
So essentially it's a big fitness court. One half will be like fitness equipment and the other half will be like studio space. So like classes for yoga or?
And it's all outdoors?
All outdoors.
So easily accessible for people, all as accessible as you possibly can be?
Yep. Typically, they have it in a big place like a park. So we were thinking actually just outside here. So they'll give us about $50,000 for it and then we have to match it. Gets a little pricey, 170,000 to 220,000. Most communities use CPA funding. They want to kind of have us locked into it pretty quickly. I don't know if that's possible, but I think in 2026, it's doable. That's something I'll bring back to the Select Board when we can.
Okay, and the Select Board will, now how would the Select Board sponsor for CPA? Because we usually decide on the CPA. So are we allowed to advocate for anything for CPA funds?
I don't think we decide, but I think we can put in the.
Well, we decide to put it on the warrant, so I don't know if it.
Oh, I see what you mean.
Yeah, I don't know if it kind of breaches the bounds of propriety.
When I did CPA midbar, the Town Administrator's Office was always like the sponsor.
Okay.
And then technically it was our office, not the Select Board really, getting involved until the warrant period.
Fantastic.
Can I ask a question?
Can you come up to a mic so everyone can identify yourself so everyone can hear you? Thank you.
I'm Charlie Quackley and we live in the residences in Lakeville. And the question I have is, is Fern Avenue a private way?
Oh, we weren't talking about that, that subject, I thought.
He brought up the fact that the paving is all finished in June.
Yeah.
Fern Ave isn't a private way, it's an accepted way.
Well, it needs to be repaired if it's not a private way.
Should be public, but I'd have to check the paving schedule.
Okay, because anybody who wants to get back into the back entrance of the residences has to negotiate a lot of parcels.
Right.
Thank you.
Yep. Another unexpected project that came up was the sinkhole of sorts at Assawamsett Elementary. It ended up being an abandoned septic system and that was filled in today. So there shouldn't be any.
Do we have any other abandoned septic systems that are going to be problematic?
So they're going to investigate more fully on the site?
That seems so irresponsible and.
It's the second one in five years.
Yeah.
There, so this potential, it might be a third, you know? So we're going to investigate more into it. Just they were put in back in the 1940s and unfortunately, there's not a lot of plans. Some of the auctions, all three of them, will be done on July 28th. Mike, Ellis and I are running an analysis currently. We'll bring to the board in July or August on our financial standing for fiscal year '27. That'll kind of drive the rest of the conversation and kind of the budget process. We'll get kind of started a whole lot earlier than it did last year. Probably in September, we'll start driving it one way or the other. I'm meeting with Civic Plus this week to go over the new website and any options. I'll bring up a future update to the Board when I can. The Economic Development Committee will be meeting either July 14th or the 21st for the first time since 2017, I believe. So that's exciting. We held interviews for the Executive Assistant to the Select Board and Town Administrator a few weeks ago. We will be bringing an appointment on July 8th. Similar to that, we interviewed a town planner candidate and we will also be bringing a recommendation for an appointment on July 8th. An employee appreciation event will occur on August 28th. And we will bring more details on that to the Select Board on July 8th as well.
Very excited to hear that we got that back on the list.
Yep, and then there is a Purple Heart Ceremony in the planning stages that will occur on July 30th at the Old Town Hall.
Is that for our Veterans Agent?
Correct.
We have a administrative question, a time, any idea, day, evening?
I believe it's 1:00, but I'll confirm.
Anyone have questions for Andrew? All right, next item is agenda item number five and it is Select Board Meeting Minutes for May 19th, May 30th and June 2nd of 2025. And the May 19th ones were emailed. Do we have an extra copy of that? No?
Yeah, we, I believe, the May 19th of it.
Emailed, right.
Yeah, and it was printed out.
It was all printed. There it is. Yep, there were printed copy in, the supplement. Does anyone have any comments, corrections, points of clarification on the May 19th?
Yes, Madam Chair, page two, the first paragraph. Member Plonker said, "This is an existing town road," but this says to lay out what I, believe I recall, what I was saying was, "Member Plonker said, 'Is this an existing town road' as this speaks or something to lay out of a portion of Harrison Avenue as a public way."
Okay, so it's a question, not a statement?
Exactly, right. Which Frank clarified, confirmed why.
Did anyone else have any other corrections?
I thought I had enough. No, I guess that's all I have, thank you.
Okay. Hearing no more.
I'll make a motion to approve the Select Board Meeting Minutes of May 19th, 2025 with.
Oh, correction. You found one?
It's very, very minor. We can do it in comments.
Yeah, sure.
Sorry, page 10, on the old colony, we do a building committee update that I provided. Second sentence. Cost estimated phase will be in July and they were looking for final cost by the end of July. That, you just missed the by in there. See that second, second sentence? By the end of July. That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Motion, motion stands. Do we have a second?
Seconded.
Motion and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call. Candido aye.
Carboni aye.
Hunt aye.
May 30th, meeting minutes? I'll make a motion to approve the Select Board Meeting Minutes of May 30th, 2025.
Seconded.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Block aye.
Candido aye.
Carboni aye.
Hunt aye.
And on to June 2nd. I'll make a motion to approve the Select Board Meeting Minutes of June 2nd, 2025.
Seconded.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Block aye.
Candido aye.
Carboni aye.
Hunt aye.
Okay, yeah, on the dot, 6:00. Let's see, so we have 6:15, meet with John Gregory. Let's go ahead and go for, Andrew, do you have any preferences here or anyone you want to?
I would think number 10, just based on the people.
Okay. Number, item number 10, discuss memo from the Zoning Board of Appeals regarding extension of Taunton Waterline for Phase 6 of Residences of La Baron Hills. On to number 10. I'm going to, yes, I'm going to read this into the record. This is a memorandum to the Board of Selectmen from the Zoning Board of Appeals dated June 16, 2025, regarding the residences of La Baron Hill. The Zoning Board of Appeals respectfully asked, respectfully asked the Lakeville Select Board to advocate on behalf of the residents and developer of the residences of La Baron Hill that the Taunton Water Department allow for the extension of the water line from La Baron Boulevard through Fern Ave to Precinct Street as part of Phase 6 of the development. It is our understanding that Taunton Water Department requested that the developer install a water gate as a condition of this extension. In addition to allowing the line extension, we would also ask that Taunton not require a water gate and that the line be kept active at all times as it would improve the pressure and quality of the water system that runs through the entire La Baron community. Since that would render the current single meter ineffective, each homeowner would individually be charged for their water use, which we feel is the fair and right thing to do. There are currently existing meters in each home and it is our understanding that the residents are willing to upgrade their water meters at their own expense to meet Taunton's specifications. Thank you for your consideration of this request. And is that John's signature? I don't even know, is that a signature?
Should be.
Looks like a butterfly. All right, so I'd like everyone to just have their discussion on that. If you're in agreement and if you have any questions and then we can ask Andrew about the water gate and what that means for Taunton.
Wait a minute, we have a Lakeville water gate?
Yes, water gate. Water gate, Mattel.
I just wanted to make sure I was listening correctly.
I know we've been a boring Select Board so far, but just buckle up. We'll be crazy in no time.
So, so you were asking us?
I'm asking some opinions.
So I know that there has been a concern down here for, you know, quite some time that we're trying to work toward resolution. As far as water is concerned, my basic understanding is that in order to have a clear and I guess safe, it has to flow, right? There has to be.
Continuous flow.
Continuous flow. So requesting from Taunton having a water gate there, that means that it's closed off?
That is my understanding, but I'm not a water expert.
Neither am I, but.
We're missing the water boy today.
It would be closed in case of an emergency, unless it was an emergency, I mean. It's like it could be opened up, but just not on a day-to-day basis.
It's just a weird request, in my opinion.
I think it's a way to continue the master meter.
Yeah. Madam Chair, so I've been doing a fair amount of work with this, helping out the homeowners association. Had some meetings with Special Services Nate, both state representative and town administrator. This has significant implications, this request here. On the surface, it may appear to be fairly simple, but it's got significant impacts. This is a solution that I personally support and have been attempting to advocate for on behalf of the homeowners association. By requiring to have, to not have this water gate installed means, just as what Andrew said, that the water would flow in continuous, which renders their one master valve ineffective, which means now that Taunton has to basically take on ownership and maintenance of the infrastructure, which is currently has not been resolved yet. It would allow the residents to be able to rebuild at residential rates instead of a commercial rate. But again, this implies that Taunton is going to take over ownership, which they have not yet agreed to. Some of the issues that have kind of held up these discussions was the lack of the ass builds, which are detailed technical designs.
Which we did and just received.
Yes, and yeah, those were received by the, produced by the developer. As far as they know, they're handed over to Taunton. And we also, and the other wrinkle in the whole equation is that, you know, DEP is aware of this and they're not going to stand by much longer and allow this system to be, for all practical purposes, unregulated at the moment.
So you're saying that DEP is going to involve themselves? Because traditionally, I have to say, DEP has not involved themselves on behalf of the people.
They, several years ago, they did send a letter requesting, you know, some additional information and resolution to the issue. The kind of, the letter didn't go anywhere. DEP just kind of didn't follow up on it. We now have DEP involved through State Representative Normoral. He's had a preliminary meeting with them and we're waiting for them to provide additional guidance. However, it's possible that DEP could either rule that the homeowners association has to take on responsibility and maintain the system themselves or rule that Taunton needs to take over ownership.
So how would they take it over themselves? So they'd make themselves a water district?
The homeowners association, yes.
Yeah.
Which could have significant implications for other developments in town as well that are currently be unregulated.
Thank you for that thorough.
So again, this is a, something would be another tool to help us apply pressure to Taunton. But I think ultimately, that pressure is going to come from DEP.
Yeah, well, in my estimation, it's a public good issue and it's.
Absolutely, absolutely. And Andrew, did I capture that correctly?
Yeah, one last piece is Stonebridge recently hired consultant lawyer of some kind with a DEP history. So I think they brought him in for this purpose to, I guess, ask DEP to get involved more than they have been. And I think there's been discussions going on.
The commercial rate always kills me.
And Madam Chair, for the record, the developer committed at the last ZBA meeting to not pulling any additional permits until this issue is resolved. And he's, they have put forward a good faith effort to resolve the issue.
Yep, appreciated. Mr. Hunt, do you have anything to add?
No, I defer most of this to Member Plonker, who is.
He's up on it.
Deep into it, yes.
All right.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
You may, please step up to the mic and identify yourself.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Kelly Newman. I'm the chairperson of our Water Committee. I just have an update that I found. I reached out to Jim Aboff on the Massachusetts DEP to get an update because apparently the attorneys, they were on vacation, this and that. The email I received this afternoon at around 4:30 is that they should be meeting next week, the attorney from, from the builder from Stonebridge and the Massachusetts DEP's attorney to discuss this very matter. That's the latest and greatest that we have.
Thank you very much. The way this is written, I don't know if we have any votes to take. But I too would propose that we write a letter in support from the Select Board. I don't think we have to vote on that.
No, I think we have consensus.
Yeah, I think it's pretty clear that we have consensus that the Select Board would echo the sentiments of the ZBA.
I could draft a letter.
Perfect.
This weekend, report to everybody before I send it off.
Very good. Thank you. 6:09. Let's go to item number 11, please.
Hey, Murray, can I speak? Do you mind?
Please come up.
Just wanted to see you again.
Yeah, I know.
Been a long time.
I hope you're enjoying your retirement.
Last time I spoke with you, you said something about getting involved and you really did.
Identify yourself for the record, please.
Kevin McMenamy, I live in the La Baron Hills HOA. So my concern here is that it's important to understand, as Chris pointed out, that none of the homeowners were ever informed that we were going to have to become a public water supply. So that's issue number one. There's a cost to that, just as it is to maintain the sewer system. And we'd mentioned that to Andrew before and I spoke with Paul and I spoke with Chris about it and I think I spoke with Rain at 1.2. The second thing is to understand is that by not having that valve open and have that continuous water flow, we, it's not safe water. I mean, because there's no way of telling what type of bacteria grows in those pipes. So the only way to have that happen is to have that continuous flow, as Chris mentioned. But the other part is by having it closed, there's a couple of problems that it brings, the bacteria, and that forces us to become a public water supply. And then the second piece is, is my understanding is from the police chief, fire chief, is that he mentioned to me something about there could be potential not to have enough power, but enough waters.
Pressure.
Pressure, exactly, thank you. To be able to, if there were fires, there could be implications to that end. So there is a safety issue as well. And the last thing I just want to point out, as Chris mentioned and Andrew mentioned in his letter, is that we are prepared. We have discussed it as HOAs to install those Itron radios in each of the homes, which they would need to read them. The complication comes in is exactly what Chris just described. It's not as simple as it sounds, but neither was the fact that, you know, after all the meetings that I've had with board members over the last couple of years, it seemed, it appears to me, and it started with Rachel Cameron. I'm not sure that anybody really oversaw the entire project. It was like a decision was made, they saw money coming as an HOA and they made the decision, okay, master meter, nobody understood it and they just probably allowed it to happen. And then at the end of the day, we get charged with commercial rate and the potential to become a public water supply. So I think that there is, it was a collective number of things. I think, I hate to bring in the town, but I think the town could have been complicit. They could have done a better job in understanding after speaking to Nate Dallin about it, who's very well informed. It's just the oversight, you know, we're being told by the city of Taunton that there was no oversight and that's the reason they don't want to take over the infrastructure. But it's not that simple. And Nate Dallin said, told us that he actually physically saw water inspectors down there periodically. It wasn't like they were there every day. So you got the city saying one thing and then you got Nate Dallin telling us another thing and then you got the builder telling us other things. So it just, I'm speaking for the group, I'm sure, but I think we are, we need your support on this because the cost for infrastructure, the sewage plants, the public water supply, all of these costs were, at least I suspect, were never taken into consideration when that development, as the development was being built. And it's very, very costly. So it's like, how far did we have to take this? I mean, for the homeowners who were never informed of any of it. And we're trying to, you know, bring people up to speed. And the important thing is to take away from it is how much can an HOA absorb? You know, in terms of cost? I mean, can we absorb infrastructure? You know, I don't think so. I mean, but right now, we're on the hook for it. We're on the hook for the public water supply. We're on the hook for the septic system, you know? But we, at least we understood that part. But the water situation with the city of Taunton, the way that they walked away from it and Andrew tried to help us get a meeting with them at one point. And ultimately boils down to money. And I get that, you know? It's like I'd almost be willing to pay the commercial rate just to have them take over the water infrastructure and we install the Itron radios. But after all the, like the meetings that we've had, I've been involved with a number of them, it just seems like we've pretty much been spinning our wheels and we're going nowhere. So it just, that's kind, I just want to take a couple of minutes to bring you up to speed on what's going on and how important it is for us as an HOA and for the homeowners. Because again, I just, if people find, if really understood the implications and costs, they'd be moving out of that place. You're just going to have like a ghost town over there. And so I just would appreciate the support that you're going to give us and I appreciate you giving me the time. Thank you.
To further a point that Mr. McMenamy made, could you add on to that letter about the chief having concerns about fire suppression if there is a gate on there for water pressure? I think that's an impactful statement as part of what we're trying to achieve. And then I will say, and I'm not an expert, Nate is the expert on, you know, what's coming in. I don't know how much ability we have to regulate water from Taunton once we approve the connection. I think that, I think a lot of what we're doing when we're approving the. own rules when it comes to connections to water. So, understood that you guys are our cautionary tale now. And it's, it's a bad place to be in and, you know, and I know we've been spinning our wheels collectively because there's just not much we could have done in the past, but there seems to be some momentum now and we're going to stick to it as much as we can.
Thank you. Very good.
Taunton Water Connection, 11. Attached is an application to connect Taunton Water for 145 Rhode Island Road. So, is attached as memo from Zenith Engineering regarding the request. Does everyone have a chance to look this over?
I assume this is a new development? I'm not familiar with what's sitting at the property now.
Yeah, there's no map.
That's what I was looking for, too.
Which gets me every time.
How can we tell why? I understand what they're asking.
It should be in the.
I know what they're asking, but why?
Right. It's a residential use.
Two lots.
Yep, two houses, and you'd have to assume, and again, you'd be assuming that it's new because it's, it's two houses.
It could be nice.
I agree.
New development or existing one failed, or I don't know.
Can we just add this to the application so we get some more insight?
Yeah, looks like the Arietta property on Rhode Island.
Look at you, you old timer from way back.
So, my first call there was, it's a, so, it's going to be on the right-hand side as you're heading south on 79. You go past Southworth Street. Mr. Lee's house is set in the back, and Mrs. Arietta's house is a very tiny little ranch style house right on the street as you're heading up the hill towards Mockingbird Hill. And it's a, it's a fairly large piece of property that goes, goes deep right there, but a very, like, maybe an 800 or 900 square foot house.
So, it sounds like they're converting from a well to go on then instead of a new construction.
But definitely a recommendation going forward to re-put, why?
I think that is.
Why and maybe a map?
Yeah, yeah. Required.
Because it does say that the assessor's map.
25 Lot 1, 3.
Map, lot, lot, but I'm not that good.
Yeah, no documentation on it.
Does anyone have any objections without the map, or do they feel comfortable making a motion?
I'm just keeping on this, we're talking water again. I would just, again, to avoid making mistakes again, I would ask for a lot more detail than what you're reading. I would ask Taunton specific, or whomever, to give details of where that water goes in. Is it, because we got burned, we were master meters, we know our situation. Because everyone kept saying, oh, yeah, it's okay, everything's okay.
This is just a strict residential connection?
I would just make sure that they're not going to fill it a master meter.
I've never even heard of it before, LeBaron, I have to tell you, besides actually a.
I know, I just, I would, I would proceed with caution just to make sure that it truly, I would ask, recommend that, because they're asking them, what is the connection? Does it go to the house?
It does say what it does in the, in the description. Yep. Do I have a motion or?
I'll make a motion to approve the, the request for Taunton Water Connection at 145 Rhode Island Road.
And can I get a second? Any discussion besides the additional points of including the map and getting a little bit more detailed on the connection application on what's it for, and then outlining what's it for? I mean, we do have the words to tell us and guide us what's going, but nothing beats having a visual. Agreed. I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Plonka, aye.
And you do a.
Carbone, aye.
Hunt, aye.
And back to item, agenda item number six, meet with John Gregory to discuss potential energy savings for the town. John, would you like to have a seat over there? Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Jeez, John, you really clear a room. I know. All right. We're meeting tonight with John Gregory to discuss potential agent, energy savings for the town. He has a small presentation he'd like to share, and he provided the board with some documents regarding things like green communities and other enhancement type of services. I'll let you, you have up to 15, or wait, I'm sorry, you have, yeah, a little over 10 minutes.
So, the agenda package in the spreadsheet I sent in the May 22nd email, I was trying to learn a concept of method behavior called smart gravity. Okay, I go on and on and on. So, the presentation tonight, I'm going to strive for smart gravity.
We're here for it.
Andrew sent me the budget book as the finance committee and the select board were going through the details. So, I went through that looking for electricity and fuel. For each department, I built a spreadsheet which totaled up to 372,000 and so change. And that includes Lakeville's share of the Freetown Lakeville school buildings. So, I reached out to Jeanne Scully at the district, she's in the accounting department. She's been tracking that herself with the energy cost, the cost of all the buildings, school buildings. So, that seemed like a huge number to me. I got to thinking, well, hearing about the financial crisis, property taxes is the income for the town. So, went into the assessor's map, well, what with the 1035 or 1055 assessor formula per thousand dollars per thousand, how much property value would result in $372,000? Okay, so, how much property would pay tax to pay our energy bill? I was stunned to find out that our Ocean Spray, two properties they have up by 495, there's two properties here on that big campus, that would not, the taxes they pay would not cover our bill. They'd be short about 700, they'd be short. So, a concept I'd like to introduce, if you don't know about it already, is something called net zero. It's a building concept that's embraced in the state's Clean Energy and Climate Change Act, or Plan for 2025 and 2030 out to 2050. So, net zero is when a house or building is built very, very efficiently, so it doesn't need much energy to heat or cool it. So, the technical phrase is energy use intensity, right? So, it just doesn't take much kilowatts to heat or cool the building on a yearly basis. So, when you put renewable energy like solar panels or wind equipment on that building, here's your energy cost, and the energy generated just about matches what the building needs. So, it's a net zero. Bottom line is, that building doesn't have a utility bill. Pays nothing because the energy comes from the renewal, and it's so efficient. Okay, so, I thought, well, if we could reach that goal across all our town buildings and get to net zero where we pay no utility bill, then our, the outgoing expense of $372,000, now that becomes savings. That's new income, where you're not spending tax dollars to pay for that, that expense. Okay, so, that's like the equivalent of getting, finding through economic development a brand-new Ocean Spray and finding land for them to occupy to generate, to pay taxes on our new business to fund our energy habit. Okay, so, I thought, well, getting a plan together, I'm not suggesting spending money right now because we are in the financial crisis. I'm saying, let's embrace the concept of net zero. And through the, we've been, the town is in the Green Community Program since 2012, with Nate and Rain and others bringing in grants, funding energy conservation measures across town buildings. And generally, that is a measure where their goal is to reduce energy use by 20%. That's great news. Good news, bad news. Good news is you're saving 20%. Bad news, you still have to pay the 80. So, that 372 might represent 80% that we haven't yet figured a way to save. So, net zero would get us to zero on utility bills. Now, there's a, in the Green Community, they've introduced a new program called the Climate Leaders Community. So, it takes Green Community and steps it up a notch or two to have grants to fund something called a roadmap. Fancy term is a decarbonization roadmap. That simply means help the town figure a way to stop using fossil fuels and go all electric. So, the, and there's a facilitator for our region in the southeast Massachusetts, a lady named Lisa Sullivan, who's our Green Community facilitator. I've talked with her on the phone, and she would be available as the representative of the Green Community Climate Leader Program, come to town, make a presentation to the select board, explain the Climate Leaders Program, what are the requirements to enter the program for a town, and the grant money available, and the timing for that grant money. My understanding, I talked to Lisa today, and then has wrote this email in the middle of May, they, the program would fund a consultant to generate the roadmap, which would then give us a plan, what we do for the library, council aging, you know, all our different town buildings. How do you achieve net zero? And that, so that, you know, if you're going to control the process, you first have to measure it. So, we've measured the, and the plan, the roadmap would give us a plan on how to achieve the goal. And what, and then, in addition to roughly $100,000 to pay for the roadmap, told there'd be another grant of approximately a little over $1 million to achieve net zero on town buildings. So, there's, you know, in comparison, over the years, I found on the mass.gov, the total money for green communities since 2012 is about $880,000. So, the, the ask of the select board is, well, first, thank you for inviting me to speak tonight. Pleasure to be here. First I ask is to invite Lisa Sullivan, set a time, and ever make a presentation to you guys about what this program involves, what the benefits of the town would be. And for the sake of short gravity, I'd like to stop here and say, maybe, do you all have questions for me, or do you want to make a motion to bring this to vote, or what's appropriate?
So, I just want to go up first. We, the town has not had their Energy Advisory Committee in effect for some time now, since probably 2019, 2020. 2020, because I remember Brian Day was on it. So, 2020. I think the right people to work on that and come up with specific solutions and advocate for that would probably be in that committee, but say, but also saying that there is a need for everything that you brought up today for trying to get closer. I, I make no illusions about thinking that we could get to zero in a very quick order. We have a lot of old buildings, we have a lot of things that it would take a very long time to get, but we can, we could do what we can with what we can. And that I would make a motion that we should make sure that it is on the agenda to reestablish that committee as soon as July 1st, right? July 1st.
We'll be voting, the membership.
Yeah, yeah, after July 1st, we'll be voting membership. So, we would need to recruit new members for that as well.
We're also doing that tonight.
Oh, that one's on? No, is it on tonight?
Yeah, number 15.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I thought, no, the whole one.
Yeah, the whole, yeah.
Like, yeah, yeah, no, adding, adding it to the website, getting more members. If you're a member of one, you can't, you can't do anything. There is no member of one. I appreciate, I read through some of your documents. As you know, Lakeville was one of the first communities to go green community, and we've focused most of our efforts on the schools in the, in the last 13 years of green communities. I know the schools have some very big challenges coming up with heating, and I think that's where I would probably start, is anything heating related for the schools as those capital projects will be coming to us, and that might be a really good place to take a small bite out of an elephant, as it were. But I don't have a specific guidance for tonight besides getting together the Energy Advisory Committee and, and then looking at where we can put our green community for the upcoming year, for starting to attack that with a consultant. But yeah, I would love to put a full committee together. And I think that committee is, how many people?
Seven? Five, seven?
Seven, but the, it's dwindled down, it's not too many people on it.
Do we want to relook at that charge and make it five to get it up and going? Seven's a really hard number to start from scratch, from, not to mention it's just a hard number anyways, these days. If we could put the charge on the agenda for next time, and then we can relook at the charge and move that forward.
And through you, maybe reach out to the members that were on there to see if there's still interest for participation, for those that were members at large that came on. They might want to continue on.
I agree.
I know I'm the delegate from this board, but I'm happy to, when we revote, somebody will vote for you.
Seconded.
Thank you. Not tonight, I'm hot.
But, yeah, I, in agreement, I think that's the best place to start and to advertise because you can't, as a group of one, you can't vote, you can't do anything, you can't move forward until there's more people. My second question is, do we have a pathway for green communities this year that we've already?
We have a few projects that are grant-funded, about 80 to 90,000. We're actually putting the projects out to bid this next month.
Yeah, so this would be for the next cycle?
Yeah.
Yep, okay, so, that's helpful context, no. Does anyone else have any comments before we wrap it up?
No, I, well, okay, I say no, and then I say it's not hot.
I appreciate you, go ahead.
So, being a member of the Old Colony School Building Committee, I'm intimately familiar with net zero, and I'm sure some of the discussions with the fires are going to be more smaller than Old Colony, but, and I, the challenge is for getting a new building to net zero, I mean, you can do it, but the initial cost. So, we just had those discussions, and it's the, you know, it's the heat pumps versus the hydrothermal, well, not hydrothermal, but the.
Geothermal?
Geothermal, sorry, geothermal. And yeah, you can do it, but the upfront costs are huge, so, but you, we've got all it, we've got all the studies, and if you space it out over 30, 40 years, yeah, you're going to save money, but to realize the cost savings are spread out. So, again, it's, do we want to ask the voters now to tack that under the cost? I'm sure you had, I mean, we had similar discussions on fire, when you want, how are you going to heat it? Heat problem, so forth, and so, you know, I will say that, I would say I support saving energy, but we've got to look at the trade-offs with the initial cost.
So, with your saying, if I'm reading it correctly, is that you're, you're for kind of getting the low-hanging fruit that's not going to have the upfront costs.
Absolutely, minimum. And the grants, obviously, the grants are fantastic, and I've always said publicly, maximize grants, grants are free money.
Yeah, but yeah, if we do, if we are able to get that person an advocate, we can give them our list of priorities and our ability to chip in or not chip in for those things. Any other comments or questions?
Since they're saying, yes, have Lisa come and speak to the select board, the select board is saying, delegate this off to the Energy Advisory Committee once it's reconstituted. So, from Lisa's perspective, she understands that the Energy Committee is active here in town because of the grant activity she's administered. So, and the person specific asked me was to ask the select board, ask, invite her to speak to the board directly about the Climate Leaders Program. It's different from the Green Community, separate from the Energy Advisory Committee. So, just throwing a wrinkle on this, I promise to be smart and brief. So, I'll just leave it at that. You guys, obviously, you have better judgment, you're more. So just leave it at that, you guys, obviously you have better judgment, more, you know. So, I'll just leave it at that, so you could...
Okay, well, you know, we can take that under advisement, and then when we're reconstituting the board, maybe we can have a joint meeting to get your purpose across, where, if we have Lisa in, because if we have an energy advisory board, they're going to be the experts in the, in the room, as opposed to, you know, us being the advocates in the room. So I think Lisa would probably want all of us in the same room.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yep, that works.
Thank you.
I'm just not familiar with the new leader, so I'm going to look into that, so thank you for bringing that up this evening. Yeah, I'll get myself educated on that.
There was a separate detail, pardon the, I left some papers in front of each nameplate, there's a thing called Oil New England. About seventy-one percent of residents in town, like myself, heat their house with oil, with oil furnace. So the folks I've been volunteering at Sustainable Middleboro, have raised up those, the fact that I've been paying four dollars and seventeen cents per gallon every fill-up, and I thought, because I had an energy down at my home, and the auditors said, well, go check out here, you find a better price. That website is where you can literally go and pull up a whole list of prices from oil suppliers in different regions of the state, south of Boston. So if you all are using oil to heat your homes, businesses, check it out, you can probably find, I mean...
So, New England Oil, is it sponsored by any of the oil companies, or is this just a not, a nonprofit?
It's a nonprofit, but I don't know for sure.
Andrew, could you look into that, so we could share it? Because we can't share it, yeah, we can't share it if it's like a company sponsored thing, but if it's a nonprofit, we would probably share it out.
Because for me, it would be a hundred and fifty dollar savings.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Gregory, I really appreciate your time.
You got it, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Agenda item number seven, discuss impossible vote to appoint Emily Sarette as management analyst. Attached is Ms. Sarette's letter of interest and resume, along with a memo from the town administrator requesting appointment. Andrew, would you like to speak to this?
Yeah, so, it's been kind of a long process since, I think it was maybe December that Christina, the former assistant to the town administrator, resigned. I didn't initially fund the position just because of the budget climate for this coming year. Eventually, with the support of the select board, we funded the position, and we kind of reconstituted it as a management analyst. And so we put it out for applications, we received about a dozen, we interviewed a few people. I was pretty shocked that Emily actually ended up applying, just because of the caliber of her expertise on a lot of different issues. The committee loved her, she buried expertise in a lot of different fields, someone that's going to hit the ground running. Really don't, I don't think we'll have to train her on anything. She's done six years of procurement experience, budget, basically everything. I know I get...
Green communities.
Green communities.
All the ARPA tracking, yep.
Yeah, everything. So, when a lot of people tell me, like, Middleboro's doing great, Emily is really one of the people in the engine room driving Middleboro, in my opinion. I sat in her position many years ago, so I know like what the position takes. I think she'll be a real asset here. I know there's a lot of stuff that kind of gets fallen through the cracks here, just from, just different projects that kind of span multiple departments, I think she'll fill them, no problem. And so I think she'll be one of the top employees in Lakeville almost immediately, so...
You've got a hype man here, who's on it.
Yeah, so, everyone's excited, everyone's already been texting me, looking forward for her to come on, so, I'm, if Emily wants to come up and say a few words on the spot?
Have a seat right over there.
You can.
Have a seat right over there. It's chatty over there. You might have to speak loud, because there's a lot going on in the...
Well, thank you guys for having me today, and for letting me speak. Really excited about this opportunity. Like Andrew said, I've been in Middleboro for about five, six years now, so, excited to kind of see what kind of challenges Lakeville has, and how I can transfer my skills over here, if you...
No shortage of things you can sink your teeth into. Great. Does anyone have any questions for Emily?
I just thought everything was pretty impressive, you know, I know that there's a good team, you know, that was formed over in Middleboro, and a big driving force, sister community. And we were very, you know, clear with our town administrator that we weren't going to leave him, you know, sailing his ship by himself, that we really needed to make sure that his office, our office, was, was full, was whole, so that we can do some really great things. So I was really excited to read what I read, your interest here, and, yeah, I...
Yeah, a lot of the skill sets that you're bringing to the role are ones that we need desperately. This will be the most amount of procurement people that we've had in the town ever, so having that coverage from multiple people, having the experience in green communities, like Member Carboni said, having experience working and putting together things from multiple departments, it's going to be a really good change of pace from like having, where Andrew just basically delineated share of everything for the last few months. And then, just like we said, we've had a lot of turnover, and, and it's, it's just time to get some good, solid team together, and, and just very confident in your ability to be part of that team.
I think she'll be a real asset for Mike Ellis as well, in the finance, soon to be potentially finance director role. I think there's a lot of growth potential for Emily in the future. She's one of those people, I think, if I win the lottery, as Mike likes to say, she could be in charge tomorrow, it kind of, so, it's exciting to have that. I think there's multiple people in town hall that can kind of fit that, which is exciting.
Yeah, you've really got a great crew going, so, you're very lucky.
Absolutely.
I have a lot of sentiments that I really expressed, definitely an impressive record, so you have my vote.
Absolutely support Andrew on this recommendation, and if he's willing to stake his reputation on this, then, yep, have at it.
Very good. I'd like to take a motion, who would like to make a motion?
Happy to make a motion. I'd like, I move that...
I'll make a motion to vote the appointment of Emily Sarette as our management analyst. Let's see, with, there's no appointment date?
There's no appointment date? It would be, it would be...
What's the, what's the start date, Emily? Start now, right?
Well, my final day, Middleboro will be the 10th of July, so...
Next day. Yeah, the next day, so like July 11th, I think, is the date.
An appointment date as of July 11, 2025.
How's that going?
You got a motion in a second, any further discussion? Hearing them, we'll call them.
Well, aye.
Candida, aye.
Carboni, aye.
Hunt, aye.
Thank you, and welcome aboard. Come on up. Come up for a customary sweaty handshake.
And you start a new job on Friday.
And do not trip over those wires, that is a...
Yeah, welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you. All right, welcome, Emily, thank you.
Thanks.
She's already navigating it.
I know, I know, she didn't trip, first test. Thank you very much, it's very exciting. We're going to move on to item number eight. So, for reasons that we just talked about in the, in the last few minutes, we had a lot of changeover and turnover and things that have been different from different boards. I wanted to get it on this board's radar, that we still have not given goals and a review for Andrew. So I want to make sure that we start in the goal-making process. It doesn't have to be completed today, I just want everyone thinking about it, but I thought the quickest way to align us is to pick a format to, to review performance. Andrew submitted a few formats for everyone to look over. There's only one that I'm not in favor of, and it was just because it was very subjective, and the language was very, very subjective, and that was the one that Ari had had previously, I believe. I think it was the last one in our packet, but either the other two, I think, were absolutely adequate, and one of them looked a little labor intensive, though. So if we, if we can get that portion out of the way, I'd like us to vote on that, just to get us all quite literally on the same page on how we like to think about giving evaluations to the TA.
Madam Chair, I know that this has always been, it used to be somewhat smoother years ago, and then, I think when we shifted, it got choppy. So I'd like to try to get this process smooth, so that it falls on the same time every year, so we're prepared, and then we can put it in our master calendar, that, you know, I'm always been one to vote the tool to be used for the evaluation, so maybe that, if there's a milestone date that says, okay, we're, we're getting into, or gearing up for the TA evaluation, this is the tool that we've used.
So we would like to do like a timeline, where it's like, we set, we do goal setting in July, and then we do the evaluation in, I think it used to be March? And that, like, sets that, that tone for the year? I don't know if that's...
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I meant, but even the tool that we're using, you know, if that's, if we're happy with the tool that we're using...
Do we have a tool?
No, that's what's in front of us.
So the tool, the tool, I labeled them A, B, C, D, and E. The tool I believe that's currently using is, which would be your C, I think? This one, B?
Should be the only one that says Lakeville.
And, hold on, where is it? It's this one? There it is. D. So we just want to go over it in this order. The one that is currently out here, there was some language in here regarding mental and physical stamina appropriate for the position, that I found kind of weird and offensive.
Yeah, right.
Especially because I'm like, you know, creeping up there, and I just don't have it anymore, so, maybe that, but no, this seems very comprehensive, but very subjective. And I think as a board, and everyone's free to say they feel differently, I think it's more important to have some objective criteria on here, that we can say, we expected you to do X, and you did X, instead of, I liked the way you did X, or I didn't like the way you did X. I think it makes it a little bit easier to measure, because as Mr. Gregory said, you first have to measure something in order for you to really get your arms around it. Did anyone have a preferred one that they want to talk about, or one that they'd like to throw out right at the beginning?
I'm not going to throw out the one we were using.
Not a fan of the existing one.
Yeah, I think I give a D to D.
Correct.
So I think that one's easy. Oh, and I didn't even put this one on my list. The other one is E, with the Glen...
Cannon.
Did anyone like this one? I mean, it is easy to check the boxes off, yeah. I thought it was part of the other one.
I stood out.
Yeah, this is, this would be an easy one to do, because it really requires, like, the least amount of evaluation. But I think in A, B, and partially C, there are some more, I don't know, meaty?
I, I do like the ones that check the boxes of your prior year's goals, and where those goals met, and where are we now. I'm also a fan of a, a six-month check-in.
Yep.
To see if any progress is being made, even if it's just brief, and maybe a reminder, you know, in case they're procrastinating, like me, trying to check the boxes in the final week.
Yeah, I agree, and I thought C didn't really have that.
C did not.
And C was just a little light, as far as evaluation. So we've killed C and D, we have A, B, and E still on. Does anyone have any of these three that they would advocate for? Or, maybe it's a combination, like, I, I don't think we have to take it in total, like, I like the part about, you know, did you make the goals, you know, did that happen? I think that should be part of any evaluation we have, regardless of what we check. Mr. Placa, Member Placa?
Yeah, so I, I would advocate at least three, I agree. Maybe the task is we go, and we're not going to give Andrew seventy-five goals, but maybe we go through, and we try to not, every member identify five or ten most, your community's most important.
Yep.
And then we kind of merge them together, we should have some sort of, how many goals do we want? One fifty, one seventy-five, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I agree, I think the goals ties right in with the evaluation, and, so, we have, we have E, A, and B. I'd love to narrow it to two.
I don't like B.
Would everyone like to kick B off the island?
B is just this one.
All right.
So, I, I like the simplicity of B, but I would add pages six and on from this one, so that we have, we add the accomplishments and the goals and directions, you know, I don't, I don't like any one of them singularly.
Got it.
But I would prefer a combination of two.
I really like the rating scale in A on the, on the first page, not the cover page, the first page, that really, that ongoing portion, instead of satisfactory.
Yep.
I found that to be like, you know, a really good indicator. Carboni?
Okay, so, the, this one is very generalized, A, is very, just generalized, this could be just taken off the shelf and said, here, we'll do this every, we can do this right now. Whereas the one that Glen Cannon used was very specific to the year, the items that were listed in here, so like section one, this is just an example, goals and objectives that the Board of Selectmen, Board of Selectmen Goals and Objectives for the Town Administrator. ARPA was on here, you know, there was a water district with the stakeholders, the finance... So this was very specific, so the goals were established, and then through here, the goals...
So I'll agree, to a certain point, I think the goal, the structure was established nicely, the actual goals were very subjective, like, good select board decisions, and I, you know, I was like, oh, you're going to fix that?
Well, yes, I'm not, I'd like it to be more objective, but very, you know, where we...
Focused, I think, I agree, this generic goal, and then there's some that are focused, I'd like to see a mix.
Yeah.
You know, we're the kind of, hey, oh, Andrew's a good guy, whatever, and then...
We'd like the same food.
You know, we said goals, and I'm just pulling up by the end, did he get this, he said he's going to get this grant, whatever.
Right, yep.
Did he do it? I mean, so that's general, I would like to see a mix of that.
So I would agree that whatever we do with what Member Hunt said, we would have six through nine from A attached to it in some...
Page six?
Yeah, page six through nine from document A, because I think this is just a really good open format to add to anything.
Agreed.
Yep.
And the, a six-month check-in gives him the ability to let us know that maybe one of these goals isn't going to be met, because I, you know, we had multiple emergencies come up that needed my attention, and things were bigger than, than we thought. So it gives him a little bit of an out... But we also know where he's at. I've had to dedicate so much time to this at this particular point in time and I don't know that I'm going to get to that one objective on my list of objectives.
Yep.
You know?
Stuff happens for sure.
Right.
Yeah.
It could be a simple.
So would anyone have a problem with saying that we should use the structure of E, maybe pare it down a little because this seems a little overwhelming? Is it only five? It looks like 50. One, two, three. I guess it's only five. Core responsibilities, staffing. I guess it actually does the job. It just looks bigger than I would like it to look. But I would like to incorporate E, but use the rating system of A. I'm Frankensteining this.
I mean, if we're, if we're looking at this, is this easier for somebody to... Sample comments, sample comments. Oh, these are samples, okay. So there is an opportunity on this vertical one for comments.
Oh, it is sample, you're right. There is some comment.
So maybe there's a box underneath each one because it, it, less paper doing it. I don't know. Either way, I don't really have much preference whether it's horizontal or vertical. But I just liked on the first one is about the goals and the objectives because they were very clear. Or, let me see, relevant to that year.
Okay, so I didn't hear anyone say anything that they wanted besides just that it was very simple on B. So would you like, we like to discard B and just focus on A and E? So Andrew, your first task. Unless a select board member would like to take these and make a mashup of them. To thoughtfully go through and take the best of E to make sure it's part of A.
Maybe, I mean, I'm not going to... Is that something that Lacy would be able to help out with because she's involved in that?
I think that's actually a really good suggestion.
So we want simple, simplicity. And I'm looking for just the language on a way to address the concrete goals that we had set. We want objective.
Yep. But then we want to leave room for what the TA thinks are his accomplishments.
Yes, that is what I'm looking for, yes.
Because...
I had asked for my goal, but my, our goal is you should add the opportunity.
But what my boss thinks is important might not be like the same thing. Or something completely came up different.
You should have the first.
Covid happened, like, you know, like no one could ever see all the challenges that that would be. That's its own little arena. Yeah. So I think having Lacy come up with a spirit of E.
So, so for instance, taking E and when we look at page four of A where it says budget and financial management, somehow incorporate the verbiage of number three, work with financial director to establish a realistic step-by-step timeline in there.
Yep, I think that's year over year the same.
So instead of just generically budget or financial management, were you able to do this? And yes, we check off those boxes, so.
And then we can come back and fill out those boxes.
A blend of these two.
Right, right.
I think that's on point.
All right, I like it. I'm going to reach out to Lacy after the meeting and I will share on... Do you have these in just a regular email?
Yeah.
Can we just do them as two separate, like word attachments? So she doesn't have to have PDF and do all the stuff. But I think this is a really good start. Second part of what we're trying to do is what the goals are actually for Andrew. And my, my thought tonight is to not have the goals stated, but to say how we would like to state the goals. Does that make sense? So this is really simple and easy. And it's just a, you know, a bullet pointed format. Yep.
Previous, I missed that, the previous.
Previous, I think mine was pretty much the same. I think Rita's was the same. I think it, this is kind of stood this test of...
They're pretty generic and we'd like to sprinkle in a few more.
Specificities, yeah. Yep. But do you, guys like the criteria for one, two, three, four as headers?
These were created.
What should be the headers? Like granted, we should have overarching themes where we're got categories of stuff, you know, whether it be employee relations, whether it be public relations, whether it be project management, budget management, you know, overall grants.
So are we at the point now that we still need to include strengthen internal operations? Or are we just generically under internal operations with goals? And then advanced town government infrastructure projects or just the heading of town infrastructure?
Yeah, I agree, I think it...
I like the FY '23, you can see they have it all, so I would lean more. You look at the second page.
Yep.
Now they've gotten rid of the strengthens, so.
Right.
They're just throwing a bunch of adjectives ahead of things.
Yeah, but we continue with, continue to strengthen internal operations. That should be the goal, strengthening of internal operations should be the goal anyway.
Yep. Yeah, there's no continuing, it's a, it's like an ocean wave.
Yep.
But next time we get together, we have to do it in open session. We can't share between us what goals are. I'd love if everyone would come to the table with some goals for Andrew. So we'll do that for July because it's just the right time to do it. And we'll use this as a guideline, but not a hard and fast one. And I agree with Member Plonka, '23 looks more specific, but I would like to even see it more specific. Like this one has fire station renovation. Due dates, times, you know, milestones, like something that's, that's really pointing to action as opposed to, you know, how do I rate you on if it says fire station renovation? The only way I could rate you is if it was completely finished. But, you know, maybe I wanted a quarter finished, maybe, you know, I want plans.
There was no measuring, and that's, that was one of my, my biggest concerns. It's like, I don't know how to measure this.
Yep, fiber network extension to where? But, you know, maybe we can just be a little bit more specific. But if you guys can pull some categories of items together and some, some general and some really specific, then we can put them all together as a working document.
Okay, I would also, if I tend to ask Andrew to maybe make a list of himself.
Of what we've been asking you for the last few months that we've probably not even kept track of.
And so if our next meeting is July 8th, right? So we'd probably put this on for July 8th. If it's not too much of a problem and I hate that you don't have to be handheld, could you send it just a quick email and say,
Reminder?
Make sure you do your goals.
Yeah.
That would be great. Because I'm going to be about, all about this for the next, you know, couple of days and then I'm going to get shiny button or something else.
Fantastic.
Not that I don't appreciate, you know, figure a priority in for anything.
Does anyone have anything else they want to add? Or we'll just bring it to the next meeting and hash it out? And if we need to, go down to a vote on what goes on there?
Yep.
All right, I think that's helpful. I love the alignment. I love that everyone's willingness to, you know, narrow this down really quickly. All right. Next item up for bids. Hi Chief.
How are you?
We're doing the same thing. We're doing the same thing. So usually...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I don't know if it's appropriate because I don't think it's on the agenda. But do you guys want to empower?
If you've got one, we'll take one.
Okay. They officially provide an hour estimate of at least two hours from about 15 minutes ago. They asked that we not hold into that. So that's, they said that's, that's what they're shooting for.
Two hours from?
Two hours from about 15 minutes ago. We've stood up the cooling center. We have about five or six people that have called interested in it. We're attempting to communicate through social media because we had one complaint that we weren't communicating out vigorously enough. The availability of the cooling center. We had...
And I know you had posted that over the weekend already. You were all over that, so yeah.
And right now we're having difficulty with the network. We're trying to communicate directly with our seniors, but there's a network issue that's blocking some of them. So if we can't figure that out in the next few minutes, the fallback is the code red.
The, is it the, I thought it was the one call?
There's a, there's a one call through the COA, I think it's called. I don't know what it's called. But they have a system for contacting their senior citizens directly. We also have code red available to us, which is an opt-in system, not quite a reverse N1. But there's a, that's available to us. So if we aren't successful in restoring contact with the seniors, we can cast that net out. It's a little bit wider than we'd like because, you know, it probably calls every, every house and every cell phone in Lakeville that's opted into the system.
Well, I think it's an important service that we're offering to people because especially if you're on the top floor somewhere, it gets hot really quick.
Yeah. We have a, we've staffed our 30 ambulants and we're going around. We've got some people that unable to get out of their houses because they're in a, at least their garage doors, things like that. So PDs fielding calls, they've stepped it up there, going around Emily's checking on their seniors. So everybody's working.
Yep, everyone remember, there's a pole on your garage door. Pull it down.
Fortunately, it's the ones that are having that problem probably shouldn't be. And that's pretty much everything. So I'll confer with Andrew before we get to the code red thing. Some people get a little upset by it, get a little annoyed.
Well, they don't get any phone calls on that phone usually if it's the house phone. And then it just rings excessively for the code red. Thank you, Chief. It would be updated. Chief, I saw it was, the agreement was different than it had been in the past for you as far as your reporting. You called it out specifically. Can you just tell me, because I wasn't here for that contract, like why it was slightly different than it was years?
I've never been one to memorize my contracts. I'd have to review it to give you. So basically, when I first got hired, they referenced the strong chief statute, which voted, was voted on by town meeting. And it basically means that my answer to the select board, but I'm supposed to and for obvious reasons coordinate and work through the town administrator. That's the kind of the, the concept or the guide that I've been trying to live under. Sometimes it's easier than other times. But that's kind of how it's been done. And in the past, I've had TAs write my reviews. I've never had the select board write my review. And I think it's been about two years since I've had one.
Yeah, and that's something we obviously need to address for everyone. So just wanted to talk about select board goal settings as well as, you know, through the town administrator, which, which will be. So last time, last time you came before the board, we talked about like some hiring that you were doing and some, some practices that the select board had voted on specifically in regards to adding on new members and having, was it having them pay for their training if they left beyond a certain point? So we had some specific things as select board that we had set out as like policy and goals. We want to make sure that that continues on. Or you bring it to us if we, if you want to go and say it's not working or, or something like, you know, where, where you're opposed to doing something that was voted on. Because that should be something that is one of our guiding principles that even though we're not your official raiders, we do have skin in the game as far as performance and expectations.
No, that makes sense.
Yep, yep. So I would like the, as we get together next week, the select board to not only come up with things for Andrew, but for the department heads too, to go through Andrew. Some of the things that we talk about in this meeting kind of stay in this meeting. Like a lot of times there's competing priorities, there's things going on. I would love a way to find a way to unite, you know, what happens here, what goes through there and how it disperses out over the individual department heads. I think it's important for everyone to be on the same page as much as possible. Chief, I know you're working technically fully staffed now and you're, you're going through that, but you're still having some turnover issues as well. Is that, in my opinion, and the rest of the board can speak up, that needs to be just a goal for the entire town about turnover? We've been pretty successful in most departments about, you know, losing people in quick succession. We usually have a lot of long-term people, but I know that's not how it is in police and fire as much. And then making sure that that's a priority. Can you speak to that because you've talked about that a little last time we're together?
I'm very superstitious, so I hate to...
Don't jinx it.
I hate to jinx the, I mean, relative, it's not really stability. It's relative stability that we have enjoyed for the last six months. It could, it could turn around tomorrow, I don't know. Especially with some of the budget questions that we had that was, may have exacerbated the problem a little bit more. I think the fear of losing their jobs kind of brought people to maybe look around a little bit more. But to bring it back, the, the retention issue is kind of, can't really be painted with a broad stroke. So there's two types of retention issues. Qualified firefighters tend to be, especially current qualified fighters tend to be, they start out strong, they come in for a few years and then they either get hired by another department, get hired by us, or kind of decided that maybe this isn't for them and they, they, they start with a family or get another full-time job and they kind of fade away. It's very, it's very unusual for a qualified fighter to be on a department for five, 10, 15 years. So you get a ton of turnover with qualified fighters and that's typical with every department. The, but there's still things that we can do to improve that turnover. So things, things that we discuss internally are things like engagement. So if you have opportunities to get them involved with calls, if you have opportunities to take a step back and insert some of your younger firefighters into situations that, that might be a potential real situation for them. It's kind of what the internal dialogue's been to have them have a sense of, you know, being included, sense of purpose to maybe, you know, light that fire where they eventually become that full-time asset for us. It's kind of become a feeder system more than a sustained augmentation to, to, to full-time firefighters. On the, on the full-time side, the lack of retention is, I mean, it's really, there's a lot of variables involved. Some of it is some lingering reputation issues for the department that, you know, some troubles that we had, you know, eight, nine, 10 years ago that, you know, really don't need to be rehashed, but they linger. Those, those things, you know, we've worked hard to overcome them with like our marketing and our public outreach, things like that. Some of it is, you know, they can leave and make more money somewhere else. There's a, you know, that, there's an element to that as well. Some of it is, is that there is, sometimes when you have a, when you've lost a lot of people, we did have a mass of pretty good excess after about maybe a year, eight, nine years ago. When you have a very junior fire department, when you have that, that lack of senior presence, that lack of like the unofficial leaders to kind of show people the way, you have a little more, a little more conflict, a little more mistakes being made, a lack of guidance for some of our employees, which contributes to a lack of retention. So there's, there's a lot of things that have contributed to it. But some of them are external, like the, the job market, the lack of paramedics. The paramedics can, can go anywhere, they can negotiate salary. They, it's really unprecedented. It's the only time in my career that a private ambulance company is... It's the only time in my career that a private ambulance company is out paying a, a, a fire department for a paramedic. So it's really kind of a difficult environment to, to operate in. And so, and then there's mistakes along the way too, uh, you know, just, uh, you know, maybe we didn't read a person the right way and engage them the right way, and not everybody's the same way, so it's, it's...
It's a bad hire.
Yeah, well, not even a bad hire, but um, sometimes, sometimes somebody, if we had the capacity to show somebody a little extra attention or mentor them in a different way, um, they could have been successful. So it's not all like, you know, there's, there's, there's obviously some, you have to look in the mirror and, and and be critical of your own leadership style and management, things like that. There's always things that I can do better and, and the leadership of the department can do better. So it's not all circumstance or things beyond our control.
Chief, I, I don't want to interrupt you, but are you partnering with um, our Director of HR on some of these challenges, or is this something you're managing in-house more?
It's not, it's not really something that I partner, it's something I've discussed with her. In, in a perfect world, I, you know, you would hire, uh, you'd hire a third party to come in and do like an operation review. And they would tell you how many people you have, how many people you need, um, how your, ideal policies that you need. You have, you know, just a, an independent set of eyes looking at the department and, and basically reviewing it and saying, you know, this is what you can do better, this is what you're doing great, and...
Is that something you think would help you just as an, as an objective tool?
The, the thing is, 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 it's an objective tool if you hire the right people. Usually if there's a, if there's, if we're truly benevolent about our, our motive, then it's a good thing. If, if you use it as an agenda to, to like maybe break a union down or break the administration down or something like that, then it's a bad thing. So if we're all in agreement that, you know, we want to do this to, to, you know, to prove the department within the constraints of our resources, then it's a great thing, and I'm not opposed to it. I, I don't think anything bad can come from it. I might, I, not might, I would learn things from it.
We did have success at one point, having a third party in. You and I worked together years ago, and we did have success.
Yeah, it's not a bad thing. Um, I wouldn't be opposed to it at all. And it's, it's one thing for me to tell you what the problems are, but, because I, having somebody on the side that's very disconnected from, from this whole town and all the emotion that's in, involved in it, and, and the personalities and the pride and all that stuff gets put aside, and for them to tell us what we can do better, what we're doing okay, um, it's, at the end of the day, it's, it's a, it's a lifesaving mission.
Yeah.
So if we, if we, if we become better at protecting people, saving lives, it's absolutely worth the investment. That's, that's my opinion.
I think that's a really great suggestion. Andrew, would you mind very much researching, and if I can find her name, like I, I had a, a person a few years ago back in twenty nineteen?
She, she's the one that had the vocabulary, she had the...
Yes.
Yes, uh?
Yes.
She could make me blush.
Yes. She was very earthy.
I've worked with, uh, I've worked with MRI in the past, they did one on my previous fire department. A lot of the recruitment places also do operations, evaluations for...
Recruitment best practices, that type of stuff.
Exactly. So I don't know what it costs, I don't know how to fund it, um, but uh, I just don't think it'd be a bad, a bad thing to do.
Okay. I think, I think that's a really good takeaway and suggestion, so, um, so we can all be aware of what the issues are and, and where we can help.
And it's, to me, it's, 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 I don't know this person, I don't have any, you know, I'm not defensive, it's not like they're signing my paycheck and I'm not taking their, you know, it's, it's a, it's, it's, it's kind of like a, it's this credible person or it's credible organization that comes in and does a review and, and points out, they, they're very tactful about it, they don't usually humiliate anybody or, or, or make anybody out to be a saint.
No, but it's a measurement, it, it's a, a measurement to, to help.
I would, I would welcome it, it, it could be, because to be honest, like my, if I had goals set for myself, my goal right now is to, is to create a structure for, for life after I leave, like that's, you know, is...
Succession planning?
Succession planning, that's what I want to develop, I want to...
So you've just jumped into my next question, like if you had goals, because I know you didn't have any goals last year or the year before, right? Did you have goals set because you didn't have reviews? Yeah, so...
I had goals, I just they weren't articulated.
What is it that you, that are your goals, even though it's not our goals, obviously? What your goals for your department would be?
So when they hired me, um, seven years ago, they asked me how would I know if I did a good job at the end of my time here in Lakeville? And I said that you wouldn't be hiring from outside. I said that I would develop, I would have a fire department that would develop a, a, a strong candidate, somebody that would best serve the town internally, and that could, uh, put any outside candidate to the shank. That was my goal. I said it during the interviews. And so that's my goal going forward, is to create the structure within my department, to not only fill that next, my seat for the next, when I, when I finally hang it up, but also the second seat and potentially a, a third seat if, if resources permit. And I think that would make, it creates competition within the department, um, it creates healthy competition, it, it, uh, it motivates people to prove themselves and to, to build their resume and, and develop, and I, people do that now. And so it'd be great to see those people that, that are doing that be rewarded someday with the positions that they deserve. So that's kind of my...
Succession planning is number one?
That's big for me. The other thing is to navigate, um, not to change gears, if you guys have any questions about that. To me, like, and I'm not, it's very difficult for me to throw this out there, but we, you know, we're very, like the town, we're very, we operate thin administratively. We're doing training, we're doing fire inspections, we're running around doing all this stuff. It would be really, really helpful if we had like an administrative type officer position that could not only help the, it would be almost like a, a middle management between, above the chief commanders, that could be used to offset overtime by filling positions during the day, um, but to also assist, uh, the deputy and I in our administrative work. It would be, uh, it'd be a godsend in the department operationally, and it would also speak to that line of succession. So there wouldn't be a, as much of a drop-off when people start to shuffle into the, into the new positions.
So for me, that's more of a, like a, a wish than it is like a, a goal? If it, if it is a goal, like what are you doing now to transition that to someone? And what are you doing in the interim?
Well, so there's a lot of stuff that I don't have to do because I have people that are motivated to improve themselves, and they're doing all the right things. But as far as, um, what I have done is I've tried to be really transparent with my budget. You know, you notice the deputy goes to the budget meetings, uh, she sits in with the town administrator when I meet with the town administrator. So the point is, and I say it just like, so I kill over and die tomorrow, um, you step in, you take over, and they don't miss a beat. That's just the, that's the way you have to be, um, in the mission above, above all else. And so I want her to, I want her to have a, a feel for how, how, how the, the place is managed, because it also makes it easier for me to be a good manager as well, because a lot of, a lot of people might be critical of Andrew and his job as a TA, but until you've sat in a TA spot, you really don't know what he's dealing with, you don't have his perspective. And it's very easy to be critical of a police chief or a fire chief, and, and I was as a deputy, I was a pain in the butt as a deputy, because I didn't know what the job was, and when I sat there, like, oh, like, uh, it, so the, the best I can do is pull back the curtain and share as much of the experience as I can, so, so there's less of a surprise when it's time for, for the deputy to step up.
So you're creating things like standard operating procedures documents?
Yeah, yeah, that's all in place already, but, um, and a lot of that too is, there's a, I developed a template. And so the people that are most talented in whatever the topic is, they actually write those, those, uh, those SOGs for the Department of Policies, things like that, and they write them, they write them through me. So that's, that's kind of a big one for me, um, is that, is that succession planning. Because I think, uh, I think it benefits, I, I, I worked for a fire department that has, um, I worked with, uh, I came up through with, with a bunch of guys that, there's five of us, or six of us that are currently chiefs in different departments, which is like unheard of. And it was all because so much stuff was delegated to us all the time, and we, we, we were, we were basically mentored by a guy, a chief named Ron Chase, who brought us up, really given us a lot of responsibility, and it shows, we, we have chiefs all over the place now. So I'd like to be that kind of a, a leader as well for, for our people.
Well, um, we're gonna task Andrew with getting, uh, reviews together and, and for all the department heads, just like we're tasked with starting his review process and starting it with goals. But I'm really appreciative of the time you're here today and discussing it. Everyone, everyone gets a turn here to discuss it, because I thought it would be important that we needed a reset, because it's been kind of disconnected.
It is, and I guess the only other rule I really have is to, I want to be, I want to see this fire station completed in the most efficient and cost-effective way possible, and I'm really learning a lot about, you know, some of the, uh, less transparent parts of this whole process, and my goal is to kind of not get dragged into the muck and, and stay, stay on the, keep my eye on the prize and push through and drive through as much as I can.
Fantastic. Any members have any questions for the chief, anything they'd like some clarity on? At the end of the day, it's gonna be Andrew that's doing all the work, but just to let you know that we're part of the team, and that we're, we're always here to listen when you've got something going on as, as you go through Andrew first, and then if it becomes wider, you guys bring it to us as a, as an action item for us to work on too.
When I start developing goals with Mike and then everyone else, all department heads, do you want me to bring that back?
Yeah. It's not that we're gonna approve them, we just like to see them.
Okay.
Like, I, I think it's important that we know, um, that we know what you're looking out for, or, you know? And if we're not in alignment, we're gonna tell you, like, next time, make sure you do this, or next time, you make sure you do that. And then we'll get in rhythm after the first set. It's just the first set that becomes kind of...
Are you guys looking for a, a standardized rating tool for all the department heads or specific to a career?
I'm gonna defer to Andrew on that because...
We have one, and I'm not a huge fan.
Yeah, the, the one, if it's the same one I used, it was like, it was okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, there was nothing special about it.
We have a pretty robust chief's network, I mean, I can communicate out, ask for what their, what their reviews are done on, to, just to collect them and see what's out there.
Yeah, it's gonna do.
All right.
Yeah, but if no one's saying anything...
My ultimate goal is to bring like a big document together, I mean, there'll be different reviews internally, but I want, I want to make a big, I call it a strategic plan for departments, it's probably what it's gonna be called, and like a binder of what everyone's doing.
It'll be, uh, I, I will say, so many people came to me and commented, they're like, why don't we see the department heads more? Like, you know, why aren't we, you know, knowing what they're doing or, you know, what's going on? And it was a good call-out, um, and it, it's something that we should be meeting with you guys more regularly and, and spending time with each of you, and making sure during the budget process that you have a chance to talk about what you're most proud of every year. Like, I, I think a lot of people just did it organically through the process as we were going through. They're like, oh, this is what we've done, this is what we've done, but the people of Lakeville don't get to hear that. Like, I will tell you, my most shocking one sitting in there, and I think I know a little bit about the town, is all the roads that Frank, you know, had on his plan. I was like shocked how many actual roads he had on his plan this year. That's important, the people of this town don't really know how, what we're doing with the, this, the resources that we're given, and I want to make sure that they know that we're doing our best to take care of it. Not to mention, know the people behind it. Chief, you do a great job of having your open houses, um, you do a great job of getting out in, in, with people. Not all our department heads are, are, that's not a strength for everyone. We should, we should have people flex that muscle more often, so people feel more comfortable reaching out to people. Like, I'm sure they feel comfortable reaching out to you because you have a social media presence. They probably feel like they know you. So, um, those type of things are important, and we should be part of it to help facilitate it, at least.
It was kind of a necessity for us, because I think we had a reputation for not being the business department, not doing the law, and we needed so much, so many resources, and it was the only way that, to get any, I mean, town meeting, the only way to get a town meeting on your side is to communicate what you need and what you're doing. And so it was kind of a necessity for us. I mean, but the, the catch-22 is now it's expected all the time. As our, as we kind of start to achieve a reasonable level of resources, people expect you to continue your outreach. So it's, it's almost a, you know, it's, it's, it's a, I don't mind doing it, and I enjoy doing it, and it benefits the, the department. But, uh, you know, as we, the need is less, we, I think the expectation is that we continue that level of outreach.
Yeah, the open houses, I think, are the best tool. I don't know about how anyone else feels, but I think being able to meet people in person and meet the firefighters and, you know, for, for you, show, um, not showcasing the conditions of, you know, of the, the place you're in right now as compared to, you know, what we're trying to achieve. I, I think those things have gone a long way in order for you to build bridges with people, and I think it's a, a real strength of yours that you brought to the role here. I don't have any more questions, like I said, this is just a, the beginning of the beginning, and trying to get everyone on a schedule for timely reviews, because everyone deserves to know where they, what they're doing, where they're at, all of those things, and setting some really good goals for everyone through Andrew, and making sure that everyone's aligned. I think I've talked quite enough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll text any updates, if you don't hear from me, that means nothing's changed, but it's gotten better. I'll text the update standard.
Thanks Chief. Does anyone need a break, or are they good to go? Just checking in, I'm home. Yeah, I'm, I'm waiting to see. Everyone crying about being hot. Agenda item number twelve? Yep, yep. Agenda item number twelve, discuss impossible vote to approve Department of Public Works Supplies Award and Catch Basin Cleaning Award to Surges. They always seem to have the, uh, the best rates around. They're a large consortium that we get the best deals from. Does anyone have questions about, um, what we're trying to achieve here, or why we've chosen Surges? If I hear no questions, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion, um, to award the DPW suppliers, um, either way, what? Oh, either way. I would like to make a motion to award the bids as presented in the Surges DPW Supply Awards for the period of July first, 2025 to June thirtieth, 2026, as presented.
Seconded.
Got a motion in the second, roll call vote.
Look aye.
Candida aye.
Carbone aye.
Hunt aye.
I'd also like to make a motion to award the Catch Basins cleaned, um, and sumps measured.
Is that the right word?
I don't know. I'm just reading what was put in front of me.
Okay.
Measured to Roadway Maintenance Services, Inc. At nineteen dollars each for contents in town, and thirty four dollars each for contents out of town.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Seconded.
Motion a second, roll call vote.
Look aye.
Candida aye.
Carbone aye.
Hunt aye.
That's it, right?
Yep.
And then we'll just have to sign?
Yep.
You have a stamp on yours? You've got the official copy.
I do too.
I don't.
Oh, you do, oh, good, now.
I'm not special. Nope, I do.
Oh, we all have it, okay.
We're all stamped.
Is it in the side folder?
Okay. Item number thirteen, discuss impossible vote to approve paper and office supplies to Surges again, for the same reason, this is just the paper and office supplies. Attached to the award sheets for the paper and office supplies awards from Surges, I'll take a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to award the office supplies, um, Surges contract to WB Mason Company, Inc. of Brockton, Mass for a two-year period commencing on July first, 2025, as presented.
Seconded.
I have a motion in the second, roll call vote.
Look aye.
Candida aye.
Carbone aye.
Hunt aye.
I'll also make a motion to award the paper supplies, uh, Surges contract to Spruce Home of Parkland, Washington, for one-year period commencing on July first, 2025, as presented.
Seconded.
I have a motion in a second, roll call vote.
Look aye.
Candida aye.
Carbone aye.
Hunt aye.
I think this is the first time I haven't seen WB Mason in the vote.
It's caused a lot of conversation amongst Surges members.
Yeah, I mean, this is like a... For a crazy thirty-year run.
First I've seen since 2016 when I started.
It's a big deal in the paper community over here. I'm starting to question myself because I'm so shocked by that. Item number fourteen, which we have across off, fourteen, and it's fifteen on mine. Fifteen.
Okay. So, it had made quick questions. Andrew, could you explain the Southeastern Regional Service Group? Are they a consortium, are they, uh?
Consortium of vote. I think it's twenty-six or twenty-seven towns and cities in the Southeast region.
Leverage our individual power of the body.
Yep, um, they do it for like different DPW. There's the big, the biggest one is the, um, paving. So that's like...
Yeah, right. See, they're doing paving and now they're doing office supplies. They do a lot.
Yeah, I think it's like a thirty percent reduction over actually trying to get it on their own, so.
And it could be anything, maybe even from paving to office supplies.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, and we pay about four thousand a year to be a part of it. So the cost save is pretty big.
Oh, I didn't, so we pay a membership fee type thing.
How much is it?
I was gonna say, yeah, that's tons. Lakeville's is two thousand.
Yeah, I was like, I was gonna say, wait, that seems high, but yeah.
And that, that kind of helps defray the administrative costs?
Yeah, because the, the member communities hire a, uh, an administrator that actually runs the bids and gets all the contracts together and makes sure they're doing a good job.
That's what I'm doing in my next line.
No, it's a good gig.
Thank you.
Uh, agenda item number fourteen slash fifteen, uh, discuss impossible vote to appoint Jen Gregory to Energy Advisory Committee. We don't have an energy advisory committee that is appointed with other members right now, correct? There are no other members because their membership expired.
I think that's correct. They start, they expire on July 31st.
So would anyone mind if we held this vote and readdressed the charter and changed it to five members instead of seven and then voted people in? Okay, I'll table this.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll table this so we can start fresh and make sure we have everything we're looking for. I'd also like to add some things in there possibly about, you know, green communities and some non, some things that have been nonspecific on who's, uh, working with them and going forward with them that we should probably just put a little bit more thought into it, less general. All right, tabling that. Item number fifteen slash sixteen, um, discuss impossible vote to appoint Nancy Yates to the ZBA, um, Bylaw Advisory Review Committee. Reading into the record, um, to select board from Conservation Commission, June 3rd, 2025, um, zoning bylaw review advisory committee. The commission voted at their May 27, 2025 meeting to recommend Nancy Yates be appointed to the ZBA, um, committee as a representative for the Conservation Commission. So, um, I had a chance to watch some of that meeting, um, and there was a discussion in that meeting that said someone from the select board's office had reached out and asked Nancy to be the chair. After talking with Andrew, um, I don't believe that's the case and that's not something that we would do that would be interfering in other boards. It would be inappropriate and, um, I just wanted to make sure that anyone hearing it from that meeting knew that there was a miscommunication somewhere because, um, as far as I know, that communication or that specific request that it be Nancy Yates was never something anyone from the TA's office or the select board had reached out for. So just wanted to throw that out to everyone. It's very important that everyone knows where being as impartial as possible on these, and it's really the individual committees driving the votes for who sits on this zebraq.
If I can, Madam Chair, I also, um, we had watched that meeting as well, um, because that's what I do. I watch other meetings, other boards and committees and, yeah, it's good because I learn a lot. But it's also that, um, with this, um, appointment, that, um, Mark Mitten, who was our conservation agent, would be also accompanying, um, the delegate to the meetings as well, zebraq meetings.
So would that be two people or would, how would that work?
Um, it wouldn't be two people, it was just that they would, it was just that he would accompany...
A non-voting member.
A non-person, just, I like to watch meetings, they like to attend meetings.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would anyone like to make a motion?
I want to make a motion, um, to appoint Nancy Yates to the zoning bylaw review advisory committee.
Seconded.
Motion in the second.
With the term to expire on July 31st, 2026.
Thank you. Thank you for catching on. Thank you, thank you. I have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Roll call?
Block Aye.
Candido Aye.
Carbone Aye.
Punt Aye.
Uh, item number seventeen, sixteen. Discuss impossible vote to appoint Delia Murphy to the Town Hall Building Reuse Committee. Attached is the application from Delia Murphy to serve on the Town Hall Building Reuse Committee. Delia is a longtime member of the Historical Commission. Is there anything, anyone? I don't think, no, Delia's not here. Was Delia asked to attend or any, are any of the people on the agenda alerted or...
Generally, we alert them.
Asked to attend? Okay. I just wanna make sure we're following that practice to give people a chance to have a chat if they're, if they so want.
I'll make a motion, um, to appoint Delia Murphy to the Town Hall Building Reuse Committee.
Term to expire...
I don't know that we did terms to expire, but I will do terms to expire July 31st, 2026.
So that's on to the board.
Seconded.
Uh, I got a motion in the second. Roll call?
Block Aye.
Candido Aye.
Carbone Aye.
Punt Aye.
Seventeen eighteen. Discuss impossible vote to accept the resignation letter from Eva June White from the Council on Aging Board. Attached is a letter from the COA Board Chairperson and the resignation of Eva June White. We never like to see anyone, um, step away from boards and committees, but we understand that life changes and goals change, and we're very appreciative of all the work that Eva June has done for the board and for the town. Does anyone want to?
And I will, again, I will reluctantly make a motion, uh, to accept the resignation letter from, I love it, Eva June White from the Council on Aging Board. Effective immediately, I believe.
Yes.
Seconded.
I have a motion in the second. Any further discussion?
Hold on, June 4th? No, um, which the term expires on July 31st, 2025. Her last meeting would be June 4th, 2025, so as effective immediately.
Says June 5th on the letter.
Okay, then we'll go with June 5th on the motion.
June 5th. Motion and...
Second, I believe.
Roll call?
Block Aye.
Candido Aye.
Carbone Aye.
Punt Aye.
And another one, uh, discuss and vote to accept the resignation letter from Elizabeth Nash from Open Space. Elizabeth Nash has been on here as long as I can remember. When I moved in town, I know Elizabeth Nash was on this board, um, or on a board. She's been on six years for the Open Space Committee. So I'm very appreciative of all the work she's done with natural, protecting our natural resources, um, and I'm hoping that if circumstances change, she may serve Lakeville again.
Excellent, excellent, um, contributor.
Yes, we have some stellar, very pleasant, we have some stellar people that volunteer for our town boards.
So I guess I'll reluctantly make a motion to accept, uh, the resignation letter from Elizabeth Nash from the Open Space Committee.
It says June 17th is the stamped date.
Okay, as of June 17th, 2025.
Seconded.
Motion in the second. Roll call vote?
Block Aye.
Candido Aye.
Carbone Aye.
Punt Aye.
Next item, agenda item twenty nineteen. Discuss impossible vote regarding request to use town pavilion for a wedding ceremony August 23rd, 2025. So attached is a request from Lucinda Perry to use the pavilion at the Old Town House for a wedding ceremony for her son and future daughter-in-law on August 23rd. She submitted a request to use town property form, release of claims, indemnity to hold harmless agreement, which is attached. Mrs. Perry is also requesting the waiver of the certificate of insurance. Andrew attached the town property use policy, which allows the waiver by the select board vote. So, in theory, I think this is fantastic. I'm happy to see people using our resources, um, but it made me realize how absolutely unprepared we are to deal with, um, that situation and how it could impact other people using that area and, um, all of those other things. So we have some tremendous spaces that we're building and we're planning to build in the future. This space, is this part of the Historical Commission's domain? Like how, you know, how are we, are we just saying this falls under the select board as a town property? Like how we...
So the select board oversees, along with the Historical Commission, the Old Town Home, Town, Town House. So I think it's like kind of an extension of that. Couple, a few different people have it, like Cultural Council has had a little bit of a say in this, Historical does, we do. It's, it's open, it's not like it's in a closed area, so like, these people, anyone could show up and just have an ad hoc wedding.
They can, but do we have any events that are town-sponsored or, or something that one of our boards, committees, commissions wanted to use it for, for the days? Because I, if I remember, there's an order of operations that we, that we have things and events. So do we already check and make sure that everything is clear with all boards, committees, and commissions for that time?
We did, and it's like a twenty, it's like a twenty-minute-long ceremony. It's like a funny one.
Yep.
But I definitely think we need to...
Are, are bathrooms open running?
Any day. Not technically, I don't know.
Okay. So I didn't know if that's problematic, like, having, because, yeah, it's gonna be at night, right? Or is it...
Yeah, three to five o'clock.
Three to five.
They didn't request the town house, they just kind of requested the pavilion itself. So I wouldn't approve the town home.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, I think we'd have to have a...
Person there.
A person there to do that, and then I think that you get, you get into who pays for that.
But at the same time, it is a really great resource that we could use, but we probably wanna maybe monetize it just to cover expenses, like cleanup, all of those type of things. We just want the support to be very cognizant, but even though this is a, a fun thing and a, a great thing, it can be, um, out of control sometimes and not for this event at all. I'm just saying, if we don't have specific rules. I was very happy to see the use policy. There's nothing in there about like the bathrooms in the use policy because we don't have it, so it would need to be updated. But do we have trash for everyone? Do we have, like, like, we're gonna have to do stuff to support this because there's gonna be, you know, a gathering of people where there's not a gathering of people. So we usually have the DPW go and clean up before, and then we have the DPW and after, or volunteers for various committees. I just don't know, you know, how that works in this setting. And granted, there, this is a public spot, anyone could do, anyone could go there and, and just show up. I just wanna make sure that we're using the facility in the right way.
Yeah, I think currently they've probably just gotta be addressed on a case-by-case basis, you know, and in this situation, you know, long-term resident, looking for some access with no one else added to the, the plan other than the guests.
Yeah, there was one line in the request, um, that said with no public access. I wasn't sure what that meant.
I didn't either.
And, um, because that to me says private event, and that's different than what this is. This is a event held in public, um, but this was my concern, with no public access.
Yeah, I'm not even sure how that will legitimately work to stop someone from just hanging around.
Yep, so, um, I, I would like to approve that, but I, I will not approve it with that language.
It would consider only condition.
Okay. Would I like everyone to stay out of the way so someone can get married? Yes. Do I wanna see other people in their wedding clothes? No. But I, I don't know that we can limit public access.
Parking would be, I'm guessing, at the Old Town Hall? Townhouse?
Library.
Would be there too.
Library.
Library.
Yeah.
Um...
So she's willing to provide further details as needed to support the request, so I guess we're gonna need a few more details.
I would just reiterate, we reiterate with her, it's not like a reception.
Yes.
Not setting up like food and drinks and...
Yes, and then, you know, making sure there's no beverage service and, and things of that nature.
And decorations, like I don't, I mean, the pavilion is, you know, I don't, just...
I got you.
It's pavilion-y.
Yeah, it's pavilion-y and neat. I just, you know, I mean, some people may wanna decorate a little bit. Maybe they bring pillars and, you know.
Yep.
Bring them, tack something up.
Well, we'll get a little more info.
Yeah.
And address it the next time.
Yeah. Would you mind very much reaching out, Andrew?
Yeah, definitely.
And like I said, I am in support of having people use the space. I just wanna make sure we're very clear and thorough about, you know, what we're asking.
I didn't talk to her directly, but Tracy did. It, it kinda sounded like whatever, whatever we need, we need to do, just to let us know.
Yep, and I'm appreciative of that, so.
So there's two votes here on this this evening? I'm guessing if one is to, um, support the request to use the pavilion, the second is to waive the certificate of insurance.
So did we reach out, um, you reached out to, um, is it Oliver Insurance still?
Yeah.
Did the name, did it change?
I don't know, I don't think so.
It's like World Insurance.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a funny name.
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna say, I think it changed.
Yeah.
And they said they had no concerns about waiving for an event like this?
Yeah, he said due to the nature of this kind of event, he's, he'd be fine with us waiving it, but he's, he did say we should have a policy in the future for any kind of small events or whatever.
Oh, that's a hard, that's a hard thing, be like, just twenty people, bloody chest weight. Like, you don't wanna wave at it, but...
Well, I'll make a motion, um, to approve the request, uh, to use the town pavilion for a wedding ceremony August 23rd, 2025, from three to five PM.
Would you amend it to say without the provision of no public access?
Or I think that can be communicated through the town administrator, but I mean, it's up to the board.
I'd like to see a little more clarification from her prior to, prior to making a motion on this. I think it should be tabled until we know a little bit more from her.
Would you...
But that's just me.
Is there a second? Or would you like to withdraw your motion?
There's no second motion, there's not.
A motion to us.
Can gently invite her in to a meeting.
Yeah, just a good, a quick conversation is, is probably from you is fine. I would like it directly through you.
Okay, yeah.
All right. Tabled. I was very happy to see that office building property used for them. I didn't know that existed. Discuss impossible vote, one-day beer and wine, special license food truck, um, Food Truck Fest America LLC, July 12, 2025. Attached is an application for one-day beer and wine license for Lakeville Food Truck and Craft Beverage Festival being held at Anger Conway Farm, 33 South Worth Street, on July 12, 2025, from 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM.
So moved.
Seconded.
I have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Block Aye.
Candido Aye. Ande to eye.
Carbone, aye?
Hunt, aye.
Did you have this item?
Yeah, I do.
Didn't we just do that one for Water Street?
That was.
That was for Island Road. Discuss and possible vote on request to connect Taunton Water to 4 Water Street. Residential three-bedroom home, max 330 gallons per day, demand 330, size of service, one-inch Again, map, map in a little bit more detail, new home, existing home, would be fantastic on the Water Connection application.
So this is the owner's name, Flip Flex LLC, what, I don't understand when I was reading that.
Flip Flex. So it says it's a residential three-bedroom home, but it is a LLC that owns the home, still a residential home.
If I remember correctly, looks like it is the second house in on the left on Water Street, the former Reynolds, Howard Reynolds residence, it appears.
Okay.
Just to give a little bit of info.
So we have 330 gallons, okay, one-inch size, okay. I'll make a motion to approve the request to connect Taunton Water for Water Street.
Second.
Second. Do any other questions? Any comments? Hearing none, roll call?
Block eye.
Ande to eye.
Carbone, aye?
Hunt, aye.
All right. Next is Subcommittee and Select Board Delegate update dates. Member Fonka, Old Colony Regional Book Building Committee.
We've not had a meeting, so I ask the Select Board to meet.
Got it. Member Carbone with the Fire Station Building Committee.
I have no updates, we have a meeting tomorrow evening.
Member Fonka with the Technology Advisory Subcommittee.
Yes, good news, I have a meeting posted for next Tuesday.
Woo-hoo, it's happening.
Community members have been notified. Excellent.
Great. Feel free to ask Andrew to post some stuff on the website in order to, not the website, the Facebook page, in order to get the word out if people want to watch.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, I know.
Well, I don't know if Lake Camp's going to cover that.
Oh.
What was that?
I don't know if Lake Camp's going to cover that.
Why wouldn't they?
They didn't, did the prior to, because they were Subcommittee.
What's going on, Lake Camp?
Oh, I don't know. We could request it, I mean, yeah, it's not going to be a huge deal.
I didn't know if that was made, again, the first two weren't covered, I don't know because we're Subcommittee, I'm like, maybe it's an informal thing, they don't cover Subcommittee.
Maybe people aren't excited about watching a Technology Advisory Subcommittee.
Well, that too.
Maybe it's not, you know, popcorn watching.
Put a new price, it's going to be at the police station, I got it, police station.
Fantastic. Better than us, what do you think about? All right, Technology Advisory Subcommittee and Member Carbone, Communication and Community Outreach, citizen academy Subcommittee.
I have nothing to report at this point, just happy to share that the Economic Development Committee was being planned, so this is next on the agenda.
Any new business to bring before the board?
I have a couple. First one is Tom Saregnano resigned from the Cable Advisory Committee. So that's a five-member board, there's only three members, now they don't have a quorum, and so negotiations are starting fairly soon, so we have to obviously post that vacancy and try to find somebody.
Yep.
My understanding is they don't typically have a whole lot of interest in it, so we'll see.
Yeah, it's not, it's not like a big item for people to jump on. If we do too, I can.
Yeah, you have history with negotiations.
Yeah, after like 10 years with Middleburg.
And the other one is, I sent, I think everyone has it, a Water Connection application for Cleopon Park. So when he did the initial project, the water line, I guess no one included the actual meter, water meter.
Oh.
I don't know why. So this is to get that.
Is there a fee?
There is, it's a minimal fee, but we still have money left over.
Okay.
From COVID, the harbor fund, so we'll just come right out of that, it's still in our account, so that shouldn't be a problem, because right now we don't have any running water there.
Yeah, okay, well. Nice underground pipe with nothing in it?
So do we make a motion to?
We do, and then we'll ratify it at the next meeting.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the Cleopon Water Connection for 49 Cleopon Road for 3,000 gallons per day.
Seconded.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Block eye.
Ande to eye.
Carbone, aye?
Hunt, aye.
Any other new business to come before the board?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Apologies, my mistake, we did have a meeting, going back to the Old Colony School Building Committee.
Oh, okay.
We had, yeah, we didn't meet on June 10th, so it was two weeks ago, and we finalized, it was more finalized design process.
Okay.
We're in the final stages now, and we selected two in terms of our energy designs, we selected two heat pumps, and then also as primary, heat pumps on the roof, and then as backup, geothermal, so they're going to.
It's all heat pumps, Lakeville, yeah.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's all electric, so. And with geothermal as a backup, so they're going into the final pricing now, and they're going to come back. We're not meeting during July, we're having a meeting in early August, they're going to have the final two, you know, with energy is obviously the biggest, one of the bigger contributing factors, cost. And then by the end of August is when they're going to have the final, final package on what will be presented, to be voted on.
Can you share that with Andrew, and then we can share that out to the public?
Oh, in August?
Yeah.
Oh, that, yes, they're going to go, we'll get it for us, and then they're going to communicate that all to the TAs.
Okay.
Yes, they'll be, yeah, okay.
Great.
So apologies for that.
No, nothing, thank you for the update.
Old business, we have to ratify the vote for Noel Relu for the appointment to the CPC for the three-year term. We voted on it at June 9 meeting? 9, 7, June 9? We voted at an earlier meeting, and we needed to ratify the vote. All right, so I'll make a motion to ratify our previous vote to appoint Noel Relu to the CPC, which is the Community Preservation Committee, as the park commission's representative for an ex, with the term to expire on July 31, 2026.
Seconded.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Block eye.
Ande to eye.
Carbone, aye?
Hunt, aye.
Update from the town administrator on planning board support needs.
I mentioned it under my TA report, but we are going to bring a candidate forward for approval on July 8.
Okay. And you feel strongly about this candidate as a good fit for the role and for the needs of the town?
Yeah, I think she'll be a good fit, for sure, with the group, yeah.
Very good. Ratify the vote for Jeffrey Youngquist to the ZBA bylaw, for the ZRAC. We've got an official letter, before we did not have an official letter stating the vote of the board, we have an official letter now.
Are we doing?
Yes. Was it in the packet?
No, we voted before, same thing.
So no, we had a memo from the chair, but we did not have an official vote from the ZBA appointing. It was just a memo of the chair, because it was the only person that expressed interest in the role.
Okay, so I haven't seen a memo.
Yeah, I didn't make the packet, but I've, I mean, I've seen it.
I've seen it as well, I think it's in digital form, I think it got emailed to us.
I think John sent it to everybody.
Yes, it's in your email. Okay, you can hold off on it if you guys want to wait, but it is in your email.
Okay. I'll make a motion to ratify our vote to appoint Jeffrey Youngquist as the representative from ZBA to the zoning bylaw review advisory committee with a term to expire July 31, 2026.
Seconded.
Mr. Youngquist has something that I would believe is a potential conflict that I would like to see filing for, a conflict of interest forms, so he can clearly let everyone know. I think I expressed it at last meeting, I didn't see an updated form, but I think that just everyone that has any conflict should be filing that yearly, not even a real conflict, even a perceived conflict should be filed, just to make sure that everyone is being as transparent as possible. Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call?
Block eye.
Ande to eye.
Carbone, aye?
Hunt, aye.
Next Select Board meeting dates is July 8 is our regularly scheduled next Select Board meeting date. Andrew, do we already have a place for this meeting?
I believe it's at the police station.
Okay. I know this is probably just my feelings, but I would love to have one time where we at least use the historic Town House, if it's not inconvenient to other members, you know, using it for other functions, just a really nice space, and if it works for Lake Camp as well.
Madam Chair?
Yeah?
The second meeting in July, 22nd?
Do we have a second meeting in July, or do we?
We can talk about that. I don't think we ever officially scheduled it.
Yeah, I think we had like a little bit of time off that we had scheduled.
You still got that?
I approve.
Seconded.
Yeah, I think I wanted to have a little gap for everyone.
Yeah, you mentioned that a little bit later in July.
People deserve a little bit of a gap. Usually the first meeting in July is pretty heavy with appointments and with cleanup for the previous year, so we usually pretty much get everything that we need to at that juncture. If we have something outstanding, I would probably, and we had to get together, I would suggest a quick remote meeting, because it's probably going to be a two-minute meeting if we had to, but.
Yeah, so August 5 is what I'm hoping.
But yes, consider it your vacation. Unpaid. Letters of interest. Okay, letter of interest, I'll read it in for the record. From Lily Drake Town Clerk, Dear Miss Drain, my current term as a member of the Council on Aging Board will end on July 31, 2025. I'm ready to request to be reappointed as a member of the Lakeville Council on Aging Board. Request for reappointments for Conservation Commission, Energy Advisory Committee, oh, we've got one right now, and Master Plan Implementation from Joe Chamberlain. I'm very appreciative of people that send their letters of interest. I think we as a board can do a better job of getting the word out and not reappointing people that don't want to be reappointed, just to have them like resign directly after. Even though it's hard to fill seats, I want people to want to be there, sometimes it's just tough. We have a letter from the Department of Agricultural Resources regarding the Alan and Donna Rink of Medmascot Cranberry Co., that they were granted an agricultural covenant by the Commonwealth, which is always exciting. And we got franchise renewal request from Verizon. Would everyone like me to read that off?
No, thank you.
Yeah, and Xfinity Comcast will no lo, Xfinity Comcast will no longer call, carry NECN, New England Cable News. Much of NECN program is available on NBC 10. And also, starting July 28, the Max MGM Plus and DVR package will no longer be available for purchase. Please reach out to the good people at Xfinity with your questions. Another letter from Xfinity is Netflix standard subscription price increase. Currently, a standard subscription is $15.49 a month, and it is going to $17.99 a month. The packages will change as follows, and next, Netflix MGM and DVR are $32.48 a month currently, will go to $34.98, and Netflix, Max, Paramount, Showtime MGM and DVR, $61.47 a month currently to $63.97. Again, please reach out to Comcast with questions and comments. Item number 27, possible executive session pursuant to MGL 30A S 21A 3 to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting law may have detrimental effect on litigating position of the public body, and the Chair so declares, and I do, national opioid litigation and pursuant to GL Chapter 30A Section 21A 3, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically the town accountant, and not to return to open session.
So moved.
I get a second?
Seconded.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call?
Block eye.
Ande to eye.
Carbone, aye?
Hunt, aye.
Thank you, everybody. All right, P 12.